The Simsbury Board of Selectmen meeting for April 21st at 6:00 PM. And we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's start with you.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm wondering if we have, you guys will be in the presentation part, but we always do public audience first, so I was wondering if there's anyone here for public audience?
Oh, two of yous on.
Oh, there were, I didn't get a list.
It's at the door.
Who's, yeah, who was on the list first?
Franklin.
I didn't sign the list.
Oh, we'll go by the list then, because it's official. Okay, we have Bob Moody, number one on the list, who you're gonna do public audience?
We're gonna switch.
Okay, Jane, and you have up to five minutes.
Okay.
And then we'll do the proclamation during the presentations.
Thank you.
Let me get my timer, for five minutes, okay?
Hello, I'm Jane Spatcham Kalpang, the Executive Director of the Simsbury Historical Society, reside at One Tower Drive. And first, I just want to say hello and thank you, everyone, for considering the proclamation that is before you this evening. The state of Connecticut has already made a proclamation similar, signed by Governor Ned Lamont for May 10th, so we're very excited. As you know, this is quite a time, 250 years since the start of the American Revolution here in New England. Of course, we have rich history in Simsbury, not only with the Phelps family that we honor here at the Simsbury Historical Society, but many other residents of town equally served during that time. So we're very honored and privileged to represent them and our community here at the Simsbury Historical Society. So it's very fitting, this time, too, April 21st. It was just yesterday, April 20th, in history, that word of the conflict in Lexington and Concord made it to Hartford, and word spread throughout this area shortly thereafter. And so our local residents immediately responded to the aid of their neighbors in Massachusetts. And so, in light of these historic events, the Simsbury Historical Society is holding an event on May 3rd, which I know many of you are aware, it's called Historic Trades of the Revolution Day. And the campus will be buzzing with activity, we'll have people doing blacksmithing and showing all the various, like, types of weaving that the women adopted as ways to support the revolutionary movement. So we invite you, as well as the entire community, to attend. There is a fee. Check out our website for more information. And that's gonna be kicking off what we call the 250th Celebration itself. There will be many other events happening in town, but we're very pleased to do this one. And we'll have plenty of reenactors on campus doing various things. And I look and I see in the audience that we might be joined today by one of them, I think it might be Colonel Phelps, otherwise known as Bob Moody.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll give your true address, not use your phone.
I'm Bob Moody, I'm past president of the Simsbury Historical Society and Chairman of the 250th Celebration Committee.
Thank you.
My present address is number four, Railers Walk, Avon. I've been a Simsbury resident for 40 years, and during those times, it's been commendable, the amount of people that have gone through our town and said, boy, what a great place you have over here, look at all these buildings in this historical society. So our committee consists of 10 members that represent various groups within the community. Kevin is representing the Board of Selectmen. And we plan a series of events and lectures to highlight not only the history of Simsbury's involvement in citizenry, but nationally. And if you drive by the Phelps House, which is the yellow flagship building of our society, you'll see two lights in the window, which represent Paul Revere's Ride, one of by land, two of by sea, throughout the nation. They'll be illuminated for about two days, the Historical Society decided on two weeks. The next major event nationally will be the Ringing of the Bells, which will be on July 4th at 2:00 PM in the afternoon throughout the nation, there'll be a ringing of the bells. So those are the bookends of the activity that our committee is planning. Stay tuned on our website for lectures and events to bring to the forefront what an historic time this is, July 4th, 2026.
Thank you. I have to look. I, I, you got a clap because of the outfits. Thank you. Um, and then we have Jamie Luchek.
Yeah, hello.
Hi.
Hello.
All right, so I am Jamie Luchek, I am the Chair of the Simsbury Sustainability Committee, and I'm really excited to be here tonight to invite everyone listening to our Second Annual Sustainability Fair. Many of you already know of this, it is also on Saturday, May 3rd, so you can just ping pong across from the activities of the Historical Society. And it will be, we are co-hosting the event on the, on May 3rd with the Simsbury Public Library from 10:00 to 3:00, so 10:00 AM, sorry, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And last year's event had well over a thousand attendees, and we drew people from all across town, as well as neighboring communities. So it was a really great day, and we're hoping that this year's gonna be even better. Crossing fingers that we have great weather once again, because it is rain or shine. Events will be indoors, in the Friends of Simsbury Library Program Room, as well as outdoors in a larger tent and a satellite tent. G-Monkey Fast Food Truck will be there, I understand they're quite a draw, so if you're hungry, you can get lunch right there. And there's a lot of programming, so we will have environmental educators, there'll be climate smart vendors, there's activities for children and teens. You can get your gardening questions answered by our friends at the Simsbury Pollinator Pathway. If you are looking to get seeds to swap, you can do that as well. Learn about composting and gardening from a UConn certified master gardener and certified composter. Learn how to identify native species and protect your garden from pests naturally. There's beekeeping, how to, how to do energy efficient home repair, and you can even talk to vendors for electric cars and things along those lines. And there will be reptiles from the Roaring Brook Nature Center that you can interact with as well. So lots more than that, but I do want to be conscious of time, and just wanted to plug that today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we have Joan Coe as, as, for public audience.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. I would like to respond to the comments Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio read at the March 24th, 2025 Board of Selective Meeting, referencing my comments about alleged illegal signs of property owned by Steve Antonio. December 4th, 2023, Board of Selectmen, including Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio, established rules and procedures of the Board of Selective Meetings. Section 8, 162-4, decorum and standards of conduct. All meeting participants should address the board and should not impugn the mode of character or integrity of any individual. The minutes of the March 24th, 2025 Board of Selectment Meeting states, quote, "Steve Antonio, 133 Holcomb Street, speaking as an individual, not a board member, said he understands the right of free speech, he appreciates the FOI Act and the transparency it provides. He spoke about the injustice of harassing our community members and town staff who we pay with tax dollars. He said he does his best to abide by all the rules of the town when doing business. He has been doing business in this town for over 60 years, and Antonio is a proud and active part of the community." Mr. Antonio said he has recently been under fire by Mrs. Coe, who says her comments are for the benefit of the town. He feels she has much more sinister goals. Praise and depreciation are elusive to her. She loves to cause others aggravation. How many tax dollars do we have to spend on her substantive and irrelevant claims? End quote. As a result of Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio's action, I would like to have the Board of Selectmen censure him for the violation of Section 162-4 of the decorum and standards of conduct. I included the link from SCTV video of the March 24th, 2025 Board of Selective Meeting with Steve Antonio's comments of public audience. The link is included. Steve Antonio's resume on the Democratic Party website states, quote, "Past or present Board's commissioners volunteer work zoning board of appeals, chairman of design review board, chairman of building code of appeals, Simsbury Main Street Board member. Education, South School, Terriffell School, Tooton Hill School, Henry James Junior High, Simsbury High School, class of 1981. Why I serve, I give back to my community and ensure what makes Simsbury great is maintained. I also, to allow, also to allow our residents the best use of their own property while protecting the rights and concerns of the neighbors." End quote. Steve Antonio, I served on boards that oversee signs for businesses, and as a businessman, he must submit site plans with signs for approval. With this background, why do we have to be, why does he have to be told about zoning violations on his properties? Town Attorney D. Crescenzo's opinion in the past stated that trees do not have First Amendment rights, and all signs should be removed of six to trees. The town appears to have selective enforcement of zoning regulations. Deputy Steve, Steve Antonio wants us to believe that he is a stellar citizen and abides by all the rules. However, a few years ago, Steve Antonio had a large Fourth of July celebration in his house with fireworks that were so explosive that my house shook. The fire marshal was alerted that dogs in the neighborhood were upset from the noise. The fire marshal went to his house, confiscated boxes of illegal fireworks. There have been allegations of illegal drug distribution at Hoops and Hops Bar, Hoops and Hops Bar and social media posts, and allegations from others, all allegations going nowhere. Having a lengthy family lineage in town should not make those persons entitled to what appears to be special privileges. On several occasions, First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis stated that the Board of Selectmen does not respond to comments made at public audience. However, there is selective enforcement using it as a tool to choose their response, which is discriminatory. Discriminatory practices lead to failed leadership. The budget as proposed is a bunch of smoke and mirrors taken from Peter to pay fall. The Board of Education is using the non-lapsing fund to add revenues to the budget. This slush fund is developer money remaining from large Boards of Education projects. Excessive taxation leads to an increase in general funds, which is unacceptable. The Gradless has not increased, revenues reduced, and taxation increased, adding a 2.55% increase in taxes with additional future encumbrances. Reducing budgets for the long term requires courage, and none of our elected and contracted employees are willing to apply severe cuts to a spending budget. When our official proposal budget for additional expenditures is a call to the taxpayers to force reductions by voting no on the proposed budget and forced reduction.
Time, Joan, Joan.
All my comments we posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joan Coe, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Um, so tonight, we have some presentations, and as you know, we have people here from, Jane and Bob, from the, or Mr. Phelps, I should say, from the Simsbury Historical Society. So we do have a long proclamation, and I would like to ask members of the Board to do the responsive reading that we, we normally do, which is appropriate, because we just finished Passover, which is where, oh no, sorry, we used to do responsive reading when I went to temple, and if anybody, and, um, let's just think, because of the Jewish holiday, that could be sort of appropriate. But anyway, none of that, I'm sorry babbling about that. Kevin, do you want to kick this off, and go down the line? Do you have, you have a copy?
Just give me a moment, and I'll, and I'll start. Town of Simsbury Proclamation, May 10, 2025, as Noah Phelps Day. Whereas Simsbury joins municipalities across the United States in recognizing lesser-known stories about historically significant people, places, and events related to the American Revolution and the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and?
Whereas Noah Phelps was born in Simsbury on January 22nd, 1740, lived here until his death on March 4th, 1809, served in the 18th Regiment Connecticut Militia with the rank of Lieutenant in 1771, and was raised to the rank of Captain in 1774, and?
Whereas a deadly confrontation on April 19th, 1775, at Lexington and Concord between Massachusetts colonists and British soldiers heralded the onset of the American Revolution, and horseback riders spread news of the Battle of Lexington and Concord in every direction, with the alarm reaching Hartford and other Connecticut towns on April 20th, 1775, and?
Whereas Captain Phelps, Phelps and others assembled in Hartford in April 1775 to converse about the means to support the people of Boston, and were called upon to design a scheme to take Fort Ticonderoga by surprise from the British and gain ownership of Artillery House there, and that group formed the Committee of War for the Expedition, and?
Whereas Captain Phelps and volunteers set out on foot to Salisbury, Connecticut, increasing the size of their party to 16 men, then continued to Pittsfield, Massachusetts, where about 50 additional volunteers joined, and then met Connecticut leaders and 100 Green Mountain Boys in the area known as Vermont. And the Council of War held in Bennington directed Cap- Captain Phelps to proceed in disguise to the fort before the surprise attack, report on its condition, and?
Steve, oh Kevin, you do the next two, because they're little.
Uh, so whereas on May 10th, 1775, the colonists overtook Fort Ticonderoga without any loss of life, becoming the first offensive victory in the fight for independence from British rule, and? Whereas Captain Phelps served as Chair of the Simsbury Town Meeting that passed the Articles of Confederation in January 1778, and Captain Phelps was one of 55 delegates who met at the Convention of the State of Connecticut in November 1778 to ratify the Articles, and?
Whereas Captain Phelps was promoted Colonel in the 18th Connecticut Regiment Continental Army in 1779, founded the Phelps Tavern in 1786, and over the course of his lifetime served as tavern keeper, Major General of the Connecticut Militia for 1796 through 1799, Postmaster, Hartford County Justice of the Peace, Judge of Probate, and Surveyor of Lands in Simsbury.
Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim May 10th, 2025, 25, as Noah Phelps Day in Simsbury, in honor of his notable contributions to the capture of Fort Ticonderoga and lengthy record of public service to our town, state, and country. So on that, we'd like to give this proclamation to you guys.
There you go. Want to do a picture of you, because we should get the whole board in here, too.
Thank you. We'll laugh after that.
We'll get every, one more.
Now, do they actually call that macaroni?
They do.
Curtis, can you move, move down, or?
Yeah, come on, Curtis.
Yep, we're on the other side, that's great.
Great.
Come on down here.
Why don't I go on the end here?
That's good. Thank you.
Kevin.
You're gonna be giant.
Okay, one, two, three, got it? And Joan, you want to get in there? No. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for the offer, that was nice of you.
Colonel, thanks for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, good to see you.
Pretty good, okay. Okay, and then the next item that we have is, we've, we've been doing this every year, is recognizing autism awareness. So we do have a proclamation here from the Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to commend Selectman Beal for including a piece in here regarding the work that the PD does with our autistic population. So, again, let's do the responsive reading. So, let's start with Curtis. Do you have a copy, you have it?
No, I don't, yeah.
Okay. It wasn't?
It's in the, in the email, there it is.
I'll pass it back to you after Heather reads.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, okay, so whereas autism is a neurological condition affecting millions of people in the United States that demands a national response and an increase in knowledge of the, of the programs that have been and are being developed to support persons with autism and their families, and?
Whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal and nonverbal communications, and?
Whereas doctors, therapists, and educators continue to help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges, and provide early, accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are vital to future growth and development, and?
Whereas ensuring that persons with autism have lifelong access to care and services need to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential.
Whereas the Board of Selectmen and Simsbury Police Department recognize that training and education between the public and first responders contributes to better outcomes within this space, and the Police Department has a long history of training, practices, and events pertaining to autism through crisis intervention training and participation in the blue and green envelope programs.
Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim April as Autism Awareness Month in Simsbury, and call upon all of us to become educated about autism, to improve early diagnosis, learn firsthand the experiences of persons with autism, build inclusive communities, and foster positive interactions with people with autism.
Okay, and I do, Diana's not here, of course she gave me a couple things to read, and wrapped it around. Um, I just wanted to, she, she provided a statement on autism as the, as the mother to Carter, and I just wanted to read it. As a longtime advocate for people with disabilities and a mom of an adult child with autism, I could not be more proud of our Board for continuing to recognize Autism Acceptance Month. Just when we think awareness is at a point that we can focus more on acceptance, the world shows us just how much awareness and education is still needed. I am grateful to live in Simsbury, where I know not only is Carter accepted, but celebrated. Let's continue to strive to be the model of how this should be for all. Okay, consent agenda. I, um, I have a few items to suggest, and then I'm open to others. Um, I was going to move, actually, the whole agenda. No, I, I was going to move items A, B, C, and D, and I guess we could include item F. I'm not sure if there's a discussion anyone wants to have on the performing arts moving to public building?
You can have a separate question, that's fine, we can put it, the consent agenda.
Do you want?
Nope.
Okay, because it's no problem, because we don't have a lot on the agenda. Um, and then the appointments and resignations, items A and B.
I concur, sign with me.
Second.
You have to motion it.
Oh, I motion.
Concur is not the right word. Can you second that?
I'll make the motion to add those items to the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I just wanted to give you this.
But for clarification, was it put on consent or not?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I, I do want to give, give a quick shout out to the local Daisy Troop, who I would have called out, but it didn't say which troop number it was, so. Yeah, I know. Oh, shoot, shoot, yeah, I said shoot. So we're gonna circle back, because I did that out of order. I'm so excited to read the proclamations. We have Tom Roy here to go over the Capitol Project update. Thank you, Kevin. Um, so, here's Tom Roy.
All right, we've got handout and everything. You should fall along.
Oh, gosh. Oh, you didn't tell me, you didn't make a high sign, I was waiting for it.
Thank you.
I already. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you want to follow along as well?
Thank you.
All right, there's one in there for you too, Tony, I don't want you to.
That's okay, I think I've seen them all.
Okay, so I think tonight's biggest and most important one is pickleball courts. Construction's started, I went down there the other day, and the fence is down.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm going there after the meeting.
The one thing to keep in mind is, um, the work is going to go very fast, and then it's gonna look like nothing's going on. It's okay. They have to let the courts, once the asphalt goes down, sit for a number of weeks before they put the paint on, or the paint's not gonna stick. So, as much as everybody's excited, we're targeting a July 1 start. The one thing that we've been very clear on is if we have damp or wet weather, we're gonna push that completion date out to make sure that we get a quality product that's gonna last. These are the asphalt courts, which are less expensive, they're the same courts that we all grew up on playing in high school tennis or what have you. They're not the newer technology that we would like to have put in, but they're gonna be a quality, high-level court when we're done. So we'll see it in July. Firetown Road Sidewalk, Adam and Danny in the Engineering Department have been doing a great job working on the last, yep?
Can I just add something here? Just for the Board's not, um, information, I asked Mark to, to investigate the, the financial difference that we, we used ARPA funds, the 350, for, from, for the CIP project. So there will be some excess funding there, and I asked the, um, staff to come up with some recommendations to potentially use that in the same vein, and they'll bring that back to us at some point.
I think that's great.
Not tonight, but.
Um, so the Firetown Road Sidewalk, um, Adam and Danny have been working with the property owners very extensively. We needed six easements and eight temporary construction agreements. We have three property owners that we're waiting to finalize that on. As soon as we get that done, we're gonna go to the DOT and CROG for their final review to receive authorization to bid. Depending upon how long that process takes, we will either be doing this work late fall or we'll be ready to go for spring next year. I personally am pushing as hard as we can, we really would like to be in the ground this fall. The one thing to keep in mind is if we're bidding a project in the middle of the construction season, the availability of contractors and their attention span to focus is not as good as if we bid it late winter, early spring. So we're gonna keep you updated on that. The Flower Bridge project is done.
On the, on the delay with the other agreements, is it a substantive delay, or there are concern for many of them, or is this just a process thing, they're on vacation?
There, there was a, um, there were some challenges early on as we started the process, most of those have been knocked down at this point. We are waiting, um, one, one of the essential holdouts has had some medical issues, another one has some family issues, and one is a large property owner that's going through a full review of the process. So we're feeling fairly confident that everything's gonna come through, it's just been tedious, as we're really anxious to get this one going.
Thank you.
Flower Bridge has been painted, all the real estate work is done. Rumor is it's the correct color. Ribbon cutting is scheduled for June 18th. We have not heard, we're actually up for a national award on that, and then we actually, I believe, we're gonna be submitting on a state level award through ACEC, which is American Council of Engineering Companies. Our engineer that worked on the project had contacted me and asked me if he could, because he felt very proud of the work that was done on that, and certainly is a great, great looking project. So, see you on June 18th. Our bike trail from Curtis Park to Route 10 is continuing to march slowly through the federalization process with the necessary permitting. The challenge right now is Connecticut DOT has submitted this for National Parks and Tribal Nation sign-off, that's gonna be the holdup, we are, exactly.
Is that a, yeah, that doesn't sound good.
That's because of the wild and scenic designation of the Farmington River, it makes us go through this extensive process. It is a tedious and slow process. However, at least it's not taking up a tremendous amount of staff time at this point, we've essentially submitted the documents, and we're just waiting for the review comments, which we hope are the minimums. If everything goes well, we'll be in construction, end of this construction season on that project, fingers crossed.
Question?
Yes.
The, the question, is the federalization, did that come as a result of the DOT coming back that time to us?
No, it's, it's a result of the wild and scenic designation, it has to go through national.
Did we always know this would happen?
I believe at a certain point, we went up one level with the permitting through Army Corps, we thought we were gonna be able to be excluded, but there was an interest in having us go through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Adam Kessler has been managing that one, and he is far more patient than I am, so good for Adam. Climax Road Bridge Replacement, this is a great project because it is grant funded, it's a very large project in terms of replacing the bridge. Even though the funding source is through CROG, through the Lotsit Program, Connecticut DOT is involved, and they are asking CROG and the Town of Simsbury, instead of doing the full replacement, to look at a rehabilitation step. Their belief is that it has a load rating that says it's sufficient, so therefore, why would you replace the entire bridge and the abutments? The challenge is, as part of the Lotsit Program, we have committed to making it more pedestrian-friendly through that corridor, which our plan is to go with a wider deck, which will allow for a future bike path that would run from Simsbury into Avon. My feeling is, as we go through the design process, they're gonna find that the existing abutments cannot withstand a new bridge superstructure and a wider path for that wide sidewalk or bike path. and a wider path for that, um, wide sidewalk or bike path. One alternative they have thrown out is to build a separate pedestrian bridge, I can tell you I'm not a big fan of that. I think what's gonna happen is as we go through the process, we're gonna end up going back to a full replacement. Our money has been secured, Adam and myself have been working closely with Frog to make sure, even though DOT has asked us to look at it as a rehabilitation, we are not releasing any of those funds that will be necessary to. I believe later this week or the following week, we're gonna be interviewing for consultant engineers so that we can start the design process next month.
The funding is not in our hands though, right?
It is not in our hands, but at least we have a checkmark next to our name on the tally sheet. Almost as good as gold.
That's all.
Stoddard dam removal, dam removal, we are in the design process. They're going through, they're testing the silting material that's been held up by the dam to make sure that it, um, doesn't have contaminants, or if it does have contaminants, what's the appropriate way to handle that. Survey is ongoing, and if everything goes well, that one's a long duration project, we're looking at, um, probably construction in twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. And that will turn that area essentially to a meadow. Simsbury Performing Arts Center, the second act addition. We have, we're going through the grant process with that one, we had hoped to actually already have advertised that one for bidding, but as part of the, um, Urban Act grant requirements, we had to update some of the design that we had done. As you remember, um, SIMPAC had done the design for the building, and they needed to marry that up with the civil site drawings that we had, so that took a couple of weeks. That's now being reviewed by DECD, and we anticipate being out to bid probably in the next couple of weeks. Plenty of time to get the bid results back in, um, and be prepared for a fall construction. Very, very tight budget on this one, so we are very anxious to get the bid results back and hopefully we're in a good place. If we're not, we also feel we have some time to do some value engineering.
And, and the general question is, um, SIMPAC has gotten the full donation, so we could be shovel-ready?
Sorry, fill that one in your way.
Not as of, uh, tonight, but prior to going out to bid, yes.
Prior to going out to bid or prior to work?
Prior to going out to bid.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that we talk about is we're gonna be very careful to be respectful of the construction community and to not go out to bid if we don't intend to award.
I agree.
That would have a longstanding effect on our future bidding. It's already a tough enough bid market, we certainly wanna stay here.
Yeah.
Meadowwood, we're still trying to tackle the, um, tobacco barn restorations. As you may recall, a few months ago, we went out to bid, came back terribly, um, terribly high compared to what our, um, funding source had. We've gone back with a new approach, which is to have the barns visible only from the outside. They will not be designed to have people go in them, which lowers the requirement for wind loading and snow loading and all of these other things that they would have to be designed for. We're waiting for our design engineer to get back to us with a proposal for the reevaluation and value engineering. Eno Hall entrance and parking lot improvements, I believe Adam Kessler was just upstairs at design review talking about the entrance improvements. That was bid, we came back high, we reworked it, which was part of why he was, um, in the design review. We're anticipating having bid results back in three weeks and hopefully we'll get the south side constructed first. That's gonna then tie in with the work on Station Street, and then we're gonna redo the parking lot. So, a lot going on altogether. Station Street, um, it was listed as a separate item, held up a little bit with Connecticut DOT and some additional review that they asked us to do. We should be ready to go on that for late summer of this year. And that's going from the one-way to the two-way. Town Hall Parking Lot, Homestretch, in the next couple of weeks, four to six weeks, you get, all of the landscaping is gonna be put in around the building. The beautiful verdant rooms, which are bordering on historic, are gonna be out, the arbor vitus are gonna be out, we're gonna have a fresh, modern set of plantings. And DW Bur is actually a local contractor, we got the low bid on that project, so. Town Forest Park, um, we are set and ready to start probably in June to dredge out the pond. The only challenge we have on that is we have to find a place to bring the material that's dredged. We're looking at various town properties and where we can spread that. Anybody has a very large hole in their backyard?
I have a lot now, from the dog.
This is very large. Tony's here, so if you have any really good detailed questions about the Pine Hill sanitary sewer replacement, we're in the homestretch on that one, uh, we'll be paving in probably the next two to three weeks. That'll wrap us up, and on that project was completely redoing all of the sanitary sewers which they had owned. When the project is done, Tony Piazza will be responsible, so if something goes wrong with that main line, WPCA will be responsible. It's what he does, it works well, having that responsibility in the homeowners was rather tough. We are currently about twelve thousand dollars below our original estimate, and there was a number of extras along the way, and we've worked really well with the community, so really a good project for everybody involved.
Great.
And they're gonna be able to finance that over fifteen years. We changed our financing terms during this, uh, project from ten to fifteen.
Are they happy with the project now?
They threw a party for the contractor.
They did, wow. Come a long way.
Yeah, I mean.
Good.
Lady was, uh, one of the owners was baking them cakes every week.
Really? It's great.
Slowed down progress. But there we have it.
That's great.
Eno Memorial Hall, we have been working on the design for upgrading all of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in that building. This project was identified, identified during the facility's master plan. The chiller units, the boilers, somewhat straightforward, but then you get into the fact that the building has been heated with steam and all of the controls were done with pneumatics, so rather than wire telling a radiator when to turn on and turn off, it was tubes with air pressure. So it is a substantial project to, um, modernize that. It's gonna be just north of four million dollars under the assumption that we can vacate the building for the eight-month construction duration. So we are in the process of having that discussion of where can we put up a temporary senior center for eight months to allow this work to go on. If we choose to try to stage the work and do the work while the building is occupied, our design engineer is telling us it's gonna be an additional one billion dollars. Seems pretty straightforward that we're gonna find a place for Kristen and her friends. Certainly, the million dollars makes a, a big difference. We have actually worked a little bit with the Sustainability Committee on that, making sure they were in, involved, and we're generally happy with the direction we're going in terms of an energy-efficient approach. And here at this building, we'll wrap up with the Town Hall rooftop units. There are six rooftop units that were installed in two thousand four. Unfortunately, as we've gone through this process, the EPA has changed the type of refrigerant that's required. I am sure, I see Steve shaking his head, we used to use something called four ten A and we've gone to four fifty-four B. Doesn't mean anything when you say those numbers, but the challenge is the new refrigerant is actually flammable, so any of the line sets need to be protected to make sure that we don't have a fire risk. Cost has gone way up. Matt Hopkins has been managing this project, he's our facility supervisor. He's done a fantastic job of saying, okay, let's dig down deep into these six units and find out what's going on. We tested the motors, we tested the, um, all of the internal units, and the recommendation that we'd like to go with right now, rather than come back and ask for, uh, two hundred sixty-five thousand additional dollars, we don't wanna do that, I see Mark already shaking his head. Instead, we're gonna replace two units now, we're gonna do full rehabs on the other four units. Then we'll be looking at getting another six years or so out of them and approaching this back when everything has calmed down. Hate to say it, no tariffs, we'll have a, a steady direction that we're going at with the new technologies, so.
But if I'm not mistaken, the new units have a shorter lifespan too.
Shockingly, a shorter lifespan and potentially higher energy costs.
Right. So, I'm psyched that you're gonna reconsider.
Yeah.
Some of the older units.
And, and again, I think it's, we have a good team working for me, and, and Matt did a great job, he understood it. Maybe he saw the look on my face when he told me what the cost was gonna be, but we came up with an alternate plan that I think is far more responsible for the tax dollars and gives us time to let the industry settle out with this new refrigerant.
Just back to the HVAC, um, so, so, I, I don't have the budget for the last two years in front of me. So we funded the, the, the three eighty-nine to kinda do the overview and planning?
To do the design.
The design. When is that four point four funded?
It is not currently funded, but we will be looking at funding it.
Is it in the unfunded category?
Originally, the plan was to be ready to be in construction this July. We're deferring that for at least one year.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and we have to, we'll do our capital planning, but it's, right now it's in unfunded.
Right.
For.
Unfunded.
What year did we just put?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, just, just curious to where that was.
Those, uh, steam heating overheat parts of the building, so we're wasting a lot of money there too.
If you need any backup on that statement.
It, it's, you know, it's like all things, you know, very few of us are driving a car from nineteen eighty-five. You could still keep a car going, still keep it on the road, that's kind of the technology we have in that building. It takes a lot of time for, an effort for the staff to keep it going and at times, occupant, uh, comfort is a factor, not to mention cost of operation.
That's a lot of space for, for a lot of it being not used.
Yeah.
Right, a lot, as you guys are looking.
Tom, could you share through the chair the, uh, your estimate from a few weeks ago now about the annual cost to run Eno? Just back of the envelope.
Yeah, it, it was, um, I wanna say a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Thank you.
Hold it, I lost you on that one.
That was, uh, heating, electricity, custodial staff, the whole package.
Oh, if it was dormant.
No, with, with, currently what we're spending just to keep the building open.
No, that's the cost of current cost.
Is it a hundred grand?
It's actually a little more, but yeah.
What's the current cost to run Town Hall or annual?
I came all right.
Well, I don't know, you had the hundred K there, so I thought I could ask you.
I, I, I don't, I don't have Town Hall, I, I'd be a little lucky.
In memorized?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, sorry.
Talk about public works.
Sorry.
The question is, what does it cost you when we're not there?
Okay, any other questions for, um, Tom?
No.
Thank you very much, it's great.
Thanks.
We'll be ready for pickleball.
Great update.
Good job on that pickleball.
Ready, I'm ready. Okay, um, oh, First Selectman's report, because I skipped, skipped the consent agenda. A couple things, I wanted to call out the, uh, it's in our communication section, the Simsbury Policy Housing Advisory Board Report is there. I just wanna thank everybody that was on that committee, it sounded like it was pretty collaborative, um, to get the ideas together, so, thanks to everybody. Um, the Town Managers' Performance Review is not in this agenda, it will be coming up in a future agenda. Um, so I apologize for having that a little bit delayed. I also wanna mention that on May twelfth, I will be turning the reins over to Deputy First Selectman, Steve Antonio, as I'll be graduating from UConn that day and evening, afternoon. Um, and I think that everybody should come to public audience and give Steven a hard time. Well, you've got a little tonight, but I'm just kidding, actually, I did put it in here though. And then just so people know, the next few meetings over the summer, we have one meeting a month. Um, so it's June sixteenth, July fourteenth, August eleventh, and if we need to hold any special meetings, we will schedule those, okay? Uh, reminder, the second budget hearing is tomorrow night, right here in this room at five forty-five, so this is your chance to speak up before we approve the referendum questions after that meeting, hopefully, and move it to referendum. Else did I have? And there'll be a budget mailer, well, Tom, you sent that out before, just around before the meeting. We'll be approving the budget mailer also, so that will be going out prior to the referendum. Hometown Heroes submissions are due by four thirty, and we meet on May sixth to talk about this year's award. May third is a big day across multiple areas in Simsbury, it's also the cleanup day, correct? Cleanup day, sustainability field, it, whatever. And then, um, I guess that's it, I guess I can pass on that, and stop talking. And I'll turn it over to Mark for, for, for the Town Managers' Report.
Thank you, Chair, so, uh, some of this has already been mentioned before, so I'll try not to repeat it, but don't miss the Sustainability Fair on May third. Wendy and I had the privilege of wishing Ms. Frances Hill, uh, happy birthday for her hundredth, uh, year with us, and that was a wonderful time over at Senior Center, thank you, Kristen, and to everybody who organized that. Uh, on April seventeenth, just last week, I was joined again, uh, by First Selectman and by Stephen Antonio, our Deputy First Selectman, for the Chamber of Commerce's presentation of an award, Best Public Servant to our very own Tom Roy, who was in the audience and just presented tonight, so congratulations to Tom for winning that prestigious reward, and thank you to our partners at the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I was asked to make a couple of announcements, uh, for the, uh, benefit of the public. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection is scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-sixth, coming up. Uh, it's gonna be held from eight AM to one PM at the Farmington High School, uh, at Farmington High School, but the event is of course open to residents of Simsbury, Avon, Canton, Farmington, Granby, and, uh, Suffield. And you can get more information about that on our website. I see Tony's here, so you'll like this one, Tony, Engineering Inspector Ed Schlicht has completed the certification, certification to become a Certified Public Infrastructure Inspector, that's a lot to say. It's a program for individuals who inspect the construction of all public infrastructure. That's, uh, all utilities, bridges, dams, sewers, pump stations, water treatment plants and so forth, uh, as well as other types of construction work. Great job, Ed. Uh, and from the Police Department, we've been asked to please share and welcome our two newest dispatchers. Kevin Ziegler joined us in late February, and Emily Nato joined us just a couple of weeks ago. They are both gonna train with our experienced dispatchers within the department for a few months, while they attend classes for the technology, uh, aspect of their training as well. And finally, as Wendy mentioned, Simsbury Community Cleanup Day, a big, big day again, May third, uh, from eight AM to ten thirty AM, and those interested in taking part, uh, in the event can sign up and get more information at, uh, SimsburyRec.com. And we really encourage everybody to get out. One more, sorry, quickly, now's the time to buy your pool pass. Thanks to the team over there with the warmer weather getting here, you should be thinking about it. Discounted only up until May thirty-first, uh, and after that, it's, uh, full freight. Uh, and then finally, it's on the agenda, I think, as a, um, a notice to the board. But for the public, the Town Parks Office will be closed the day on April twenty-fourth. As staff is, uh, gonna be attending the Connecticut Town Parks Association Conference, and the Parks Office will reopen to the public on Friday, April twenty-fifth, at eight thirty AM, so they will be closed on Thursday. And that's all I have, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, and I do wanna, I, I did leave out a couple of things, we had some employee recognitions, ten-year anniversaries, so I wanted to give a shout out to Justin Johnson and Kevin Marino, that are police officers, and also to our Republican registrar voter, Susan Salina, ten years, so. Okay, and now I will turn it over to Selectmen, Liaison, Subcommittee Reports, whatever people would like to share. Curtis, you wanna start?
Sure, um, just to let the public know, today started water war, wars at the high school. This morning, I had two kids hanging outside my, my garage, five AM, so water wars, just be, be aware, the kids are out there trying to drag down their friends and shoot them with water. Uh, the police, like, the Police Commission did not meet last week because it was, um, the school vacation week, so they canceled the meeting last week. Zoning actually meets in about fifteen minutes, so.
Hurry up.
If I grab up early, I'll get over to that.
Okay. Are they, is there a hearing going on tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay, no, okay, just curious.
That's it.
Okay.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Conservation continued the public, yeah, that's, might be literally what they're, I think, conservation, yeah.
Oh, that, that's what I was thinking about, yeah, okay. Um, I was gonna add a couple of things on personnel, you can add the one that you just pointed out to me, but. Well, you can do it. We had, at Personnel on the tenth, we had the, um, Eric Gomes present the Gov HR summary, um, results of this, the, um, comp and classification study, and we've asked that they present it and bring it to the full board, so that wasn't on this agenda, but it should be on one coming up, unless I load up the one that Steve's gonna do, and I don't have to do any of it, but I'll try to space it out a little bit. And then I'm gonna read Diana's report, if everybody's okay. Do you want, I just have to, she said it to me.
You have to be as excited as she is.
Like, okay, the, the Board of Ed, Board of Ed's High School Spring Play Learned Ladies is coming this weekend. SIMPAC, their executive director's been announced, they are pleased to welcome Allison Young, who lives in Simsbury with her family and comes with a host of experience. The Telkamp Mountain Music Festival has kicked off, um, June twenty-eighth, and I wanna, I keep saying Ben Folds is coming on July twenty-fifth, which is a huge get for the town. And then on the twenty-second of May, they'll be hosting a Chamber After Hours where they'll present, um, do their press event and introduce Allison, so that would be a good time for us to go. Not mentioning a cleanup day again, Fair Rent has a couple of commit, um, items, and, um, Aging and Disability has a new support group for parents of childrens with disabilities, that's all.
As Wendy alluded to, just acknowledging that Personnel met and we had some concerns about interviewing all of the applicants. The Ethics, um, Personnel will interview three chosen, the top, um, selection of applicants for the Ethics Board, and that will commence at the next regularly scheduled Personnel meeting. Simsbury Main Street Partnership and Economic Development Commission are jointly still working on the Office Space Project where they are compiling. Simsbury Main Street Partnership and the Economic Development Commission are jointly still working on the office space project, where they are compiling a list for analysis of all office space. EDC will be meeting this coming week, so I look forward to that being pushed further forward. Simsbury Main Street Partnership is also working on Restaurant Week, uh, they are still organizing, so we don't have a set date for that week to happen, but hopefully it will happen at least on an annual basis for our town. There's only one grand opening, but another business has come to town, Studio seven-sixty will be located to the rear of the landmark building, which is next to Walden Hardware, and their grand opening will be May ninth.
Kevin? May third. Sustainability Fair, Cleanup Day, um, and Noah Phelps, so, um, like, library is happening now, so I'll just report a couple of things. We, um, they submitted a sixty-thousand-dollar PACP, a grant, we were awarded around seventeen thousand of that. Still, uh, good that the town staff take the work to, um, submit that, because that's great money that, that we can use. Carol Robinson is a new library staff member, that's a children's librarian. A couple of activities, including the Innovators Workshop on, on April fifth was well-attended, and the Sweet Connections Event, in partnership with a couple of other town committees, was also well-attended. Even though the library was nominated for the Connecticut Library Association Excellence in Public Library Service Award, um, they didn't win this year, but congrats on them for the nomination. As far as it did, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think we can move into selectman action, and the only one that is left is item E, which is the approve an amendment to the Fire District's memorandum of understanding. I will turn this over to Mark, because the town manager's office worked on this with staff, so if you'd like to give us some background on how this came about.
Thanks, Chair, yeah, I'll, I'll actually throw it over to Tom, he, he was the leader on this, we've been working with the Fire District briefly, and, uh, Tom and Rick Bizano, our IT Director, have really put this together, I'll just emphasize before I turn it over to Tom that this is a one-year pilot, we're trying it out. We're trying to build a, a stronger, uh, relationship with them, we already do some things, as you know. Um, and the idea is that this should set us up, hopefully, we think, uh, for some shared services grants, so, Tom, if you wanna say a few words about this?
Yeah, um, so the presented, the draft MOU and your pack in front of you, there's a couple other updates besides the IT one, just to point out. In paragraph two and three, we just updated the yearly amount for twenty-five, twenty-six. While we were updating it, we didn't think it made sense to keep the old values, just to keep that aware. Um, but paragraph five is the new one for you, um, the Fire District approached Rick and asked if there would be any consideration of, um, shared services with IT. And then he kinda quickly came to our office and asked if it's something we should explore. Um, so for, as Mark mentioned, for the last couple of months, they've been exploring the, the possibility of it. Um, part of what we said was, as long as, um, IT staff was comfortable with it, we didn't want them to add any more work that they weren't comfortable. Um, and as they were okay with the work being done. And as Mark mentioned, it's a one-year pilot, where we'll, um, reassess kind of the fee, um, going each year. Um, our IT staff has been instructed to keep an accurate time log of work performed on the Fire District side. So that way, we can use that to make an accurate fee for the next year going forward. Um, the Fire District's gonna be in charge of purchasing their own hardware and software, they'll consult with Rick and his staff. And all in, I think our, our three IT members are excited to get it going, um, and thank you for considering.
Anybody have any questions on that?
It's, you said about a pilot and a one-year thing, is there anything that references that it's just one year?
We put that we would reassess, like a reevaluation of support services to take place every fiscal year.
Okay.
And it'll be, that has to be agreed on, the, for the yearly payment cost, but also just the support services has to be agreed upon by the town, the Fire District.
To me, it reads like a, an agreement that has the intent of permanence, and that's fine with me, but if people are walking into this with the intent that it's only gonna be for one year and then, and then we'll reevaluate, and it's easy to walk away from, that's not how it reads to me. So I'm fine with it if it's our intent to continue with this, and then if there's a major showstopper, we'll, we'll shut down, it's just from intent, it's fine. On number seven, on paragraph seven, it talks about agreement and termination, the way that it reads to me is that, uh, we could amend it with a hundred-and-eighty-day notice. I would have a period, um, here to separate those two clauses, so that an amendment could happen anytime, as long as we agree to it, without a hundred-and-eighty-day notice. So the MOU may be amended by mutual agreement and writing by both parties, period. The MOU may be terminated by other party and writing with a one-hundred-and-eighty-day notice.
Yep, we'll make those edits. And I neglected to mention, sorry, that the town attorney did review it as well, uh, so members of the board can, uh, just make a note of that.
And the Fire District also reviewed it as well, yeah.
There's also a numbering issue that Steven mentioned on the number of paragraphs, there's the number six.
Two-sixes.
Make it six A and six B?
Yep.
Just to, um, one other thing that came out when I heard of this the first time was, we're actually gonna count, not count hours explicitly, but we're gonna approximate the Fire Department's usage, so we do have a better understanding of evaluation of these services, unless I'm mistaken.
No, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is, this is twenty thousand a year, so it's, it's really five thousand dollars for three months of IT support services, correct? It's not, it's not a bad deal, I think, right?
Yeah, paid quarterly, but twenty thousand for the year.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, but, but, so we're, we're, if, if, if it becomes more, or we're, we feel like it's not covering our costs, we will increase that.
Yeah, that's why we told the IT staff to keep an accurate time log.
Yeah. Do you have an example of just kind of what we, one of the things we do for them?
Most of it's troubleshooting, uh, the initial number that we started with was twenty thousand, that, that didn't exactly come from thin air, but it was the Fire District's assessment based on what they'd been paying, uh, give or take a bit to their internal resource, which is being phased out, so that the prior, uh, resource was one individual, um, not a full-time employee, so we did have a sense, Rick had a sense of what the estimated usage would be, and how frequently they were relying on that individual, uh, and so we felt comfortable at the twenty thousand. I think the issue is if they experience off-hours, uh, trouble, they're calling our IT guy or his delegate, so it's around-the-clock, uh, trouble, trouble alerts and so forth, but Fire District also has vendors and so do we, uh, so we're gonna all learn together how we can, you know, fold this into our current, um, process in as seamless, as seamless as we can. My own sense is that the twenty thousand is an estimate, and, and so you'll hear more from, from us on that as we, as we look at what the actual time, uh, is. Uh, obviously, our concern is we don't want, uh, we don't, we, we don't wanna be short on our end, because we're now taking on more. But, but the long-term strategic thinking is that this is something that could become grant-funded because of its appeal, you know, particularly at the state level, uh, as a shared, potentially a new shared service between the municipal side of local government and the Fire District. Uh, and that ultimately might lead to, uh, a more positive fiscal impact for the town.
Do, just one more question, do we know if they have any, are, are they pretty much gonna be IT status quo for this year, or are they planning any big implementation? That we may end up getting?
That's a good question, they're, they're not looking to give us any surprises, I, I can tell you that, I mean, they are our, our partners, they've been uh, really helpful with, with Rick, and there've been, you know, five or six good meetings and discussions to, to troubleshoot the proposal. Uh, and, and we think we've overcome the, the couple of challenges that we had initially, so. We, we, we used caution getting into this and we're ready to come to you and, and say, let's try it out, and, and we're looking forward to reporting a successful, uh, expansion of the relationship.
Okay, anybody else have questions?
I have no concerns with the substance of it, but I'd like to see the finalized agreement before I vote on that.
Yeah.
I'd say we can vote on it based on the changes, or do you wanna not vote on it?
It doesn't seem like there's that much of a critical rush, and I think we could see the final agreement before we vote.
Okay.
Is the, is that just the one, the wording change?
And the period and the number.
Yeah, there were some other issues, weren't there, that we just talked about, or are those numbers already corrected?
Got the numbering, I got the period, and I didn't capture the first one.
Did you, did you, um, say that the numbers that we have in our packet are the corrected numbers, or those need to be corrected?
No, so the numbers, oh, in, in, in section two and three, the number, the year, the fiscal year cost, um, was updated in this draft, is that what you're?
Yeah, we just didn't wanna imply that paragraph seven was the only, we also took the opportunity, yeah.
So it was just updated for the, for current year, so it's nothing new, it's just, it was just updated to bring it current.
Nothing new.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's fine.
Okay, um, so I asked for a motion effective April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, to approve the amended memo, memorandum of understanding with the Simsbury Fire District, um, as, as, subject to, as amended, did I say that already? To approve the amended, as amended, and authorize town manager Mark Nelson to execute the agreement to amend the memorandum from time to time.
Still moved.
Second.
What is to amend the memorandum from time to time?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that too, good question.
As the amount increases, we're, again, we're, we're just looking at it as, as, uh, figuring out what the cost is gonna be in coming years, and, uh, we think the twenty thousand is low, but thanks.
I'd like to, I'd like to execute the agreement, period, and if that's okay with whoever moved it.
Yes.
Yes.
Say what he said?
Could make it one year.
We'll authorize him to execute the agreement, and then we'll amend the memorandum when we need to.
Well, we're gonna see it next year probably because of that, right?
Right, we'll amend it then.
Okay, to execute the agreement, amend it, amend the motion. So.
To rechange the motion?
Okay, we, we just said to take out, to amend the memorandum from time to time, we're amending to agree to what's here. And then we're only expecting to get it back next year to see the numbers. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Great.
Okay, that's done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, and, uh, let's see where we are now. Okay, so the minutes, I asked for a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-fourth for the regular meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one typo, but it does change the substance. It's under public audience for Helen Peterson, second paragraph, third sentence down, should be charged, not change.
Wow, you really read every word.
Isn't that what you're supposed to do?
No, you are, you are. I would've just read, uh, over, charge or change.
Oh, you would only charge fifteen thousand, is that what you're saying?
That's what she said.
Okay, any other changes? So I'd like to, oh, so with that change, as amended, where we put the motion out, correct? So, so, as, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so. Now we vote.
Okay, let's vote, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I felt lost with like one agenda item tonight. Um, the, uh, put out a motion for the April second, twenty-twenty-five special meeting.
Still moved.
Sorry.
Any discussion on that? Any yellow highlights? All those in favor say aye, aye. Um, again, we had a bunch of communications, I do wanna talk, uh, make sure the board has a chance to read the policy, um, housing policy, because I plan to bring back items from that to this board to discuss. Um, so if there's something that really stands out to you, give me a heads up. The other option is too, that we have, uh, maybe a, a special meeting to discuss it and bring in George and talk about some of the options in there too. So just keep that in mind as we go forward.
I think it's worth either a special meeting or setting aside time in a regular meeting agenda to, to digest it.
Yeah, because there's a lot in there and there's a lot we have questions, I would have questions on, so yes, I agree with you. Um, anything else in here that, the communications? If not with that, I'd ask for a motion to move to executive session. What? Did you have money on this or something?
No.
I asked, move to executive session.
Uh, pending litigation.
Oh, with, yeah, with, on the full board, Mark, Tom?
Yeah, the assessor won't be joining us then.
And Bob D.
And Bob D.
For, sorry, pursuant to CGS one-two-hundred-six-B pending litigation regarding pending tax appeal for Simsbury Hot Meadow Street L, I'll say.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Um, all those in favor say aye, aye, okay, thanks for the help.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.